Good to go.
All right, it is 4:31 and I'm going to call the CVB meeting to order for Wednesday, November 18th. We have with us today Lou Thurston, our mayor, who's going to be helping with some information as far as the tree light lighting ceremony. Has everybody had a chance to go over the financials? Anthony, how about you? Stacy?
Stacy?
I think I got about halfway through.
Okay. Stacy says yes.
And Lisa is joining right now.
Hi Lisa.
Hello. Trying to remove all my stuff.
We're being recorded, Matt's. Recording it so it can go out on the web.
Okay, I see it. I see the little record button.
Now, I just asked if everybody had a chance to go over the financials and the minutes from what Matt sent us and then the minutes from our last meeting.
I'm looking for the minutes. I didn't look at them. I did look at the financials.
Oh, okay.
And on the financials, we do have, we agreed to do the George Lay signs for out on the east side. I can't remember the name of it right now. My brain just went blank, but we're trying to get another copy of that invoice to pay it. We haven't paid that yet. We have the other one, but not that one for some reason, so once we get that, we will write a check for it.
Okay. From, from what I see that was sent, Matt, you want to kind of just give us a brief overview of what you, what you have?
Yeah, so right now the checking balance is $10,953.21. We did transfer over the money from the community plaza donation from Hillsborough Clinic, and so that went out of there. And we're also holding some money for the Christmas tree purchase, for the upgrade purchase, and we've written a check for that too, but there's still a little bit of extra money in there for that. And the budget sheet is a little bit screwed up. I'm still having a little bit of trouble figuring out how it's set up, but we'll be doing a new budget here at the end of the year. We'll be able to kind of format that a little bit, I think, and make it make a little bit more sense to kind of understand what it is, but there's a fair amount of non-budgeted things in there that we've done over this year. And so we'll have to kind of take into account when we form the next year's budget of how to sort of account for some of that stuff. I think there's ways to budget that and just kind of have contingency or broader kind of categories with the the budget sheet is a little bit wonky and a little bit off, but I think the P and L statement is accurate.
Okay. I do have an invoice from the Chamber of Commerce and I can bring that tomorrow when I come in to sign paperwork. It is for the amount of $500 and it is cover portion of the Down Home Christmas advertising. And I know we agreed to do that and voted on that.
And Sue, I think you got a copy of the ad with some corrections that we'll be making. I think you got that today.
Yes, and, and that's something when we get to that. As far as the museum goes, there may be some changes as far as the museum. Unfortunately, COVID has reared its ugly head and had an effect on a board member and, or two. One directly and one indirectly. So Steve is supposed to be putting some information together tonight and I will probably getting a little view tomorrow with any updates on the part for the museum.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure you saw that email.
Yeah, I, I sent a thank you note to Kate.
Awesome.
So the the invoice for the 500 will just be sent, writing or signing a check for that tomorrow then?
Yeah, we've written the check already. I got the invoice as well, so we just need signers for the check.
Okay, I can do that tomorrow when I come into town.
Okay.
Um, so if there's any questions from anybody on the financials? Do we have a motion from anyone to accept?
I'll motion to accept the financials.
Okay. Any, anyone would like to second you?
I'll second.
Okay, Casey, second. In favor of accepting them as as presented, say aye.
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 Stacy also wrote aye.
All right. And I think we got, oh, an aye from Stacy too, so we will accept them. The minutes from October? And everybody's had a chance to go over those? Are there any changes? That anyone sees we need to do? Okay, do we have a motion to accept the as presented?
Yes, I motion.
I could second that.
Who's that? Who said that?
It was me, Matt.
Matt, sorry. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 I have it. We would like to, at this point, address the which is the Christmas tree, excuse me, the Christmas light contest. And that has been very, very popular. We started doing it last year for anybody who's new to, to the CVB. People are able to enter by taking a photograph of their Christmas light display at their home. And it is entered in the Facebook for the CVB Facebook page. And everyone who visits it can vote. And whoever has the most votes is how we choose our winners. As you can see, we have $100 prize to a nonprofit and that last year, one of the churches had, had won that. And then we have five additional winners at $100 each and $5 gift certificate from one of locally owned eating establishments. And that would, that would try to help encourage if people want to visit our restaurants or any, any eating establishment in, in the city of Hillsborough because right now, as we all know, there's, there's, times are a little tough for folks right now. There's been some financial, financial issues that have affected people because of COVID. And if there is discussion on anything, this is a great time to bring up your ideas and thoughts.
So how many people entered it last year? Any ideas?
Yeah, I'm trying to think. There was, there was a lot.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm guessing 20, a minimum of 20.
Oh, wow, okay.
And, and they just go out and they take a photo of their Christmas light play. And then people go on and they vote. And what's really great is family members of all these different people who've entered, they can vote for where it, we get people from all over who go on and, and vote.
It's a good idea, especially if you have that much participation. I think that's
Oh, yes.
Good program.
We, we, we decided last year to change it. Letting the community vote. And that gives everybody kind of a sense of it's, it's, it's fair because some, some people in the past were a little bit concerned about how it was, how the winners were chosen. And prior to last year, there was a, a list and the criteria was, was marked off. And then whoever had the most points according to that list was how the winner was chosen. So by changing it to Facebook and letting anybody and everybody get on and vote via Facebook, everybody had a fair shot in, in their eyes, you know, in the contest. It worked out real well.
So is this something that we need to approve to go forward with? Is that?
If that, this is what we had talked about in the past, but if we could go ahead and just decide on the, the prizes as, as listed in the new business and the gift certificates. Who knows if somebody's having a, a busy day and they go, oh, wait, we won this gift certificate, so we can go too. And so we thought, well, well, this is what we had talked about in the past with having the gift certificates. So if, if it's, if it's okay with everybody and we decide to vote on it and have it like it is, we will have the winners come to and I'm saying we because I'm including all of you. This is all CVB. We'll have the winners come to the city building. We'll have a photo taken of them and we will have our certificates, gift certificates. Oh, that's Michael. And then they will choose, you know, like a, a blind draw so that they get to choose their own, will put their photo in on the Facebook.
Okay. So it says in the, on the agenda that they would receive $100, but it says possibly $100. So is it, do we want to do 100? Oh, we, Stacy made a motion to approve the Christmas lights contested as presented. I just want to I'm, I'm okay, but I want to know, is it $100? It says possibly $100, so.
And that's what we're gonna, right, right now, we'll just kind of decide if that's what everybody thinks. You know, somebody can make a motion to accept it as it's presented in.
So Stacy's already on the chat, so.
If Stacy's motion is for $100, I'll second it.
Okay. I'm trying to write here. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will, we will have the Christmas light contest as presented. Photography contest. Has anybody gotten on our CVB Facebook page? This, this is what appeared in the paper and we do have some entries already. And now, I didn't vote because I'm on the board and I don't want anybody to think I'm playing favorites, but there are some really, really good ones. They're all really good and I wish to be able to do them all. So we do have entries on, on our, on our contest. And as soon as, let's see, when did it say? Submit by the 15th. So that is done. We will be tabulating and by the 25th is when the winners will be chosen. So that's the update on that.
And Stacy had a question in the chat. Now, the, as, as the Christmas light contest was proposed, it was a $100 cash award and a $25 gift card, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, that's what it was.
And then the next item for old business is the billboards. And you brought that up earlier, that, Matt?
Yeah, we, we agreed to do the one on the east side over there and not the, not the west billboard that George Lay has, so we're working on getting the invoice back for just that one. And we'll, we'll get that done once we have that.
George, George Lay's didn't return my call today, but I was, I wasn't available, so they left a voice note, so I'll call him in the morning and we'll get it.
Okay, so we'll take care of that. Once we get it, we'll write a check and you can sign that while you're in too.
Okay. Um, the Christmas tree extension delivery is tomorrow, the 19th, and Dale Dahlke is expecting them to deliver that. So that's the, the update on the extension. So it's going to be here in plenty of time for Down Home Christmas. The tree lighting ceremony, I'm going to let Lou talk to you all about that. There's, there's been some changes due to.
Sure, sure, Sue, thanks. With the COVID situation and the numbers dramatically increasing, we're not looking to have a bunch of people congregate down for the tree lighting, so the thought is, is that we will go to a Facebook Live event where we can televise the, the lighting ceremony on the, on Facebook. I mean, there, there, we may have a few people want to hang out, you know, and obviously we'll social distance and have our masks and, and all of that, but generally speaking, we're going to, we're going to go to a face, make it a Facebook Live virtual event this year.
And as a result of that, we had originally talked to Holly Nickel and she will not be helping sing Christmas carols because with the COVID and everything and we want to make sure that people aren't projecting virus.
Right.
Unknowingly, so hopefully you'll not be there. As it stands right now, Pastor John Warner from Bryan Lutheran in Hillsborough is planning on doing
The invocation.
Yeah, he's going to do the invocation and then the Hillsborough Police Department will be.
We can, well, you know, that's, that's a question that I have. I mean, how, how would we want to, again, want to handle that? I mean, you know, we're going to have some kind of live event, but we don't necessarily, again, want to, want to have a big crowd gathered, so. Matt, your thoughts about, about the PD at this point? You know, I'm not against, we, I know you guys were talking about recognizing them and doing something. And, you know, maybe we could have a representative of the PD as opposed to all of them. And I know the sheriff has been invited, so maybe we have Dan or, or Jesse Hebert if Dan's not available. And we have Sheriff Kraft representing the county there and we can still do, you know, what, what, what you guys had intended to do that way. Does that sound, sound fair?
I think so. That way, that way, we kind of, until, until we get a little more handle on this COVID thing.
Well, we definitely, Matt and I have been working on city operations and, and what, what we're doing and we've definitely made some changes in some of the, some of the activities that the city crews are doing and Matt, you may want to talk about. I can let you speak to that.
Yeah, we've had how to put it, issues with COVID and quarantining people and moving things around. And so we're pulling back on a lot of what we're doing. You know, we've altered some of our things and I've actually spoken to Steve a little bit about some of the museum stuff too, but we're just kind of pulling back to bare bones kind of things and not doing anything extra at this point. So, you know, we're not trying to, we're trying to keep people from being exposed to different things. And so sometimes that creates a little bit of an issue, but we're, we're kind of limiting who comes in, who comes out and what our crews are doing. And like I say, we're terribly shorthanded in a couple places, including the police department. Thankfully, the fire department isn't there yet, but we want to keep them, keep them safe too. So we've been pulling them back and so they're not going to be participating in the cruise part of it either. And so we're kind of moving people around and trying to make sure everybody stays safe, so that, that's kind of what we're doing. And, you know, as, as things change, if, if things improve, you know, maybe we can have a different conversation, but I'm not real optimistic between here and there that it's going to be a, a difference. So we're just trying to keep everybody safe and so we've altered those operations.
And, and that's what we want to do, you know. The, the purpose of the CVB is to bring in visitors and we want to make sure it's safe for them. And if we can get something out through the city Facebook page, CVB Facebook page to make an announcement that those things that night will be done Facebook Live and they can still enjoy it without any risk for their health. And, and that's what we want to do. We want people to come, but we want them to come back healthy each time. As far as the report from the museum board, like I was telling Lisa just a little bit ago when we, we began, because of some issues with COVID, I, I'm going to get back with you before noon tomorrow or at least with Kate, see once what kind of changes we will have or not have for the Down Home Christmas. I wish, I wish we didn't have to deal with COVID, but we do. And so we're trying to be responsible and respectful so that we don't put any, put anyone in a situation where they could maybe not be with us next year. That's not our, our goal. For the Scheffler House Christmas, that's going to be taken care of as far as museum board otherwise. The CVB had given money to the museum for the purchase of some ring doorbells. And that way, when somebody comes to the visitor center or they come to the Scheffler House, we have access to be able to visit with them, do a tour if, if that's what they're wanting. So we do have at the at the visitor center one that's already up and running because the internet is over there. As far as I understand correctly, there is supposed to be internet going in over at the Scheffler House area. So that way, and it's security too. It's, it, it also provides security. So if anybody wants to go by and just annoy Steve, go by the visitor's center, wave and drive on by and, and it will, you will see it. It'll go to his phone.
Yeah, so, yeah, just to, to clarify, we are shutting tours down to the public right now, so until, until further notice. And Steve's still going to be there working because he's got tons of stuff to get caught up on. But yeah, we're not doing public tours at this point of, of the museum or the Scheffler House, so another one of those unfortunate COVID things.
Is there any other business that anyone would like to bring up? And oh, hi Sean. Is, is there anything, any ideas or thoughts that you would like to present to the CVB board? Oh, Shauna? We, we don't hear you, hon. Oh.
Still can't hear you, I'm sorry.
She must have somebody in there with her that she can't.
Yeah, so Stacy made a comment on the, she says, I fully support the COVID precautions and I'm wondering if we can consider a GoPro, a virtual tour and maybe for the CVB to use as well as at the museum. So some kind of, and, and we've been working with Steve and asking him about doing that, so if there's something like the GoPro, we'll buy it through the city because it's, it'll be a museum thing, but, you know, and CVB would be welcome to use that anytime too.
I think under the circumstances with the COVID, doing the virtual tours could be really nice. That way we can still be out there in the public and people don't wonder, well, are they shut down indefinitely?
Right. Yeah, it's a good option. A lot of people are moving to it actually, so it's getting to be more common.
Now, I, I did not have anything that was for tabled business other than that we were just going over the billboards. Unless there's anything that anyone else is wanting to present to the board for tabled business?
You, you do have on the agenda a report from the chamber about Down Home Christmas, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa, I went too fast. Sorry.
It's all good. We made a few changes too because of the COVID, so we are not having any home-based businesses. We are canceling that. That isn't really public information yet because we're contacting the, the people that were signed up for that before we release it to the public. So everything we're doing that day will be outside. And the Santa Claus pictures, Santa Claus will be behind a glass window in the except for shop. The kids can stand out front. We have a photographer. It will be family, kids, you know, it will be family groups. We have a photographer that's coming in to take pictures and TC Wireless will be printing those pictures for us. Kids will get goodie sacks. The chamber is selling chili and cinnamon rolls out of the chamber office, but we will do curbside. It's all to go. We're doing the cruise, which of course, again, is, you know, contactless, if you want to make it that way, and a, and a contest for that, if they decorate their cars for Christmas, we'll, we'll have them pulling into stalls, we'll take their pictures and send them on their way.
Are you, are you going to dress up as Mrs. Santa or anything with your G?
You know, I'm thinking. You know, I'm thinking about a wreath, but I don't know that there'll be any Mrs. Santa. But, so everything we're going to be doing is going to be based outside, and there won't be any indoor things. And we will have people in the area to, like with Santa, to keep the lines, if there are lines, to keep people separated. In fact, we'll be talking to the city about blocking off some of the parking areas in front of it so that people can spread out a little bit more, we just haven't gotten to that point yet. Also, Jared Jost is bringing his antique sleigh downtown to sit there. It is a Brutal Church sleigh that was used, so there's history to Hillsborough, and it will be on display downtown also. And if people want to take pictures in front of it, they can. And then, of course, we'll be having Christmas music played for four hours downtown too during that time. The, the hardware store will be handing out a kid's craft kit, so people can go in and get the kit and take it home and do it, since we aren't able to do kids' crafts this year. TC Wireless is also providing a kid's craft frame for their Santa photo that will be handed out when they pick up their photo, so they can take it home and make a frame for their photo, so.
That's nice. We're getting creative, aren't we? Okay, I see here from Stacy. I'm fully supporting COVID precautions, and I'm wondering, could we consider a GoPro for virtual tours? Yes, yes, yes. I think Christmas light contest, we need to discuss print advertising for it as well as the printed scavenger hunt we did last year in the pre-press.
We did already talk about the Christmas light contest, and we approved that, but yeah, we, we haven't talked about advertising, so. So what did we do last year for advertising? Anybody?
Hey, Stacy, do you, let's see, you want to make a motion to repeat of last year's? Can you, can you? Oh, here.
To advertise the contest and then have the scavenger hunt hard copy in the free press for people to cut out, so however much that is, I guess, do we, do you happen to know how much that ran? I mean, can. If we're going to make a motion, I'd like to know kind of what, how much it did. We did a Survey Monkey, our online forum, that could work too, okay?
We did have it advertised in the free press.
So I'm unfamiliar with how, we, we do have a Survey Monkey account with the city, so you know, you can certainly use that, but I, I'm not familiar enough with kind of what this is, so.
Well, Shauna, oh, I'm sorry, Santa's Little Helpers went around to the different entries, and then there was like a question, and it, it had to do with the, the entry, and when people entered the scavenger hunt, it gave them something to do to go and look for something specific, it, it, different sites, and it turned out to be a family. Families could do it, they'd get their kiddos together, go around in the car, and fill out where they would find different things at these different entries. Then they would turn it in, and then we had a, a price for for the scavenger hunt. And I wish, hmm. Should we go ahead and, and I, you know, I can make sure we get emails on the costs to go back and look and see, or do we want to just do a blind vote that we just reuse the same size and same advertisement as last year?
I would be okay with that if we, you know, could send out kind of all that stuff and, and kind of explain it a little bit more in writing, that would be helpful.
Right.
But I would, I would make a motion to do what we did last year. Do you know how much it, I mean, not to exceed like $500 or something like that? Is that, surely wouldn't be more than that, I wouldn't think, but.
It would be.
So yeah, I would make a motion to approve the advertising for that, for the scavenger hunt, not to exceed $500.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
That's what we will do, not to exceed $500, alrighty. Is there any other ideas, thoughts? That anyone would like to share with Casey?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Well, if that, yet I would like to suggest that we follow our suit that we've done in years past for many years. We will regroup and meet again in January. Seems like there's so many things that go on in December, and in the past, we have not met in December, so if that works for everybody, we could meet again on the third Wednesday of January. Does that work for everyone?
Looks for me.
All right. All right, well then, before we go, I'd like to wish everybody a very healthy and safe Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, if we see you downtown, we'll wave. I promise not to hug this year, I'll hug everybody next year, hopefully, but thank you all for being a part of the CBB, thank you all for bringing your thoughts and ideas and helping to make Hillsborough a place where people want to come and visit and return many times over, because when they come and visit, the whole community prospers. So thank you all very much. And if there's anything else, we will adjourn and see you all in January, God willing.
Thanks, Sue.
Thank you all. Everybody stay safe.